So, for you, local views, you can't go anywhere because if you're...
I've been busy.
Then you get a whole bunch of...
I work.
And if you praise anybody, then there's really no sense in doing review. But if you don't praise anybody, why somebody gives...
Oh, that's... I was hoping it'd just go away.
But I do need to use a reminder of things that I want to go through. Yeah. Oh, and they gave dances with wolves at one star. Did you ever believe that? I didn't read the movie community. My son does. So they're...
A one star is gonna be...
I haven't read it. But if you look at the stars...
And then they wouldn't change it. It was their weekend.
Colors this evening will be presented by Post 101 of the American Legion of Forgotten Warriors Post. Please join me in my pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the sovereign and public which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, gentlemen. The record will reflect that all of the council members are present except Councilman Sampson and Shay. Any changes to the minutes at the last minute? This is Shae.
On page 11 where Alderman Wood is speaking, it's about the middle of the page. He said, "At least in downtown, we'll have new streets." It says, "No streets." Page 11.
All right. Any other changes? If not, then the minutes will stand approved as corrected. We have no items for final consideration this evening. We'll go on to comments from citizens. Any citizens like to take three minutes to address the council? We welcome your comments. Yes, sir.
My name is Bruce Whitey. I'm on the Board of Directors with MCAT, Missoula Cable Access Television, and I was here to present our monthly report to you, which I handed out. Before I go into all the good news that MCAT has conveyed, I'd like to set the record straight concerning a survey that Les Hilliard sent out that was concerned with service to the Rattlesnake in providing the MCAT signal. Of the 1,590 surveys mailed out, he received 992 back. This is 62 percent return, and he made this seem like a low response in a call message that appeared on Rattlesnake Cable. Now, anybody who's dealt with attitude surveys would be pleased as much to get a 62 percent return. In fact, most surveys that receive a 50 to 30 percent return, they consider their survey successful. Next, out of the 992 returned surveys, 197 people expressed specific desire to see MCAT. Now, I was talking to a friend of mine who works for a cable station down in California, and he said, "20 percent? I can sell advertising on that." So 20 percent is a good number to get back, especially considering the survey that was sent out. Now, one of the reasons that MCAT has a broad appeal is that we are an active member of the Missoula community. Of course, that's easy to say, but I can back that up. At this point, and we're less than a year old, we provide a training to one out of 90 Missoula citizens. Now, if you would take a look at the progress report that I handed out to you, if you look about midway down, says...I'm just gonna hit some more poignant numbers here. The new programs, there's 41 new locally-produced programs. That's a 35 percent increase over the last three months, or the past three months. And then put it even into more perspective, I was talking to Mary and Randy, you know, who can we compare this to? And they said, "Okay, Longmont, Colorado, chosen because of similar demographics. Their big challenge is just getting people in the doors to train." And they're kind of a cause for celebration when they have four programs a month, new locally-produced programs a month. Overall, we have 55 percent of our programming is locally-produced programming, and that doesn't count replays. To date, 548 people have been trained, and based on performance of average cable access stations, we have projected that it would take three years to hit this level of training. So I hope that puts it into a little bit of perspective for you. Other news that might be of interest to you, the Missoulian now lists our schedule in their television grid, and KUFM is run behind the community message board. And so this will make it possible to expand the hours on the message board. The National Federation of Local Cable Programmers has selected MCAT as a judging site for nationwide video competition, which is called Hometown USA. And this is an honor because this organization only selects access centers that have been doing things right. And at the behest of the National Federation of Local Cable Programmers, MCAT will host the first regional cable access conference that's ever been held in Montana. So you might mark our new calendars, because we'd love to see you present there, that this is going on in September 27th through the 29th. Now, what accounts from MCAT's rapid success? Well, there's a couple of things going on. The one thing, Missoula is full of motivated and active citizens. And second of all, MCAT has actively sought to become involved with the community. Now, how many of you have been down there to visit our facilities? Okay, a few of you have. I have heard it said by certain council people that the MCAT facilities are only used by evangelical Christians and people with time hanging heavy on their hands. In the time that I've spent down there, I have run into people who have time hanging heavy on their hands, and I've run into evangelical Christians, and I've run into a few nurses who were producing a program on physically challenged people. I've run into schoolteachers, firemen who wanted to make safety information available in a video format, high school age people, senior citizens, musicians, junior high school age people, Vietnam veterans, and many more. MCAT is not just a symbol, but we're an active participant in upholding a privilege guaranteed in our American Bill of Rights, that being the freedom of expression. We're the best First Amendment game in town. True, you can publish letters in the Missouli...letters to the editor in the Missoulian, and I think that's a very important attribute of our newspaper, but MCAT doesn't limit you to 300 words. Basically, it boils down to this, that if you're against MCAT, then you're against Missoula citizens' right to free speech. There's something that I'd like you to think about after I leave, and that's that this weekend, men and women who fought in the Middle East returned home to a town wrapped in yellow ribbons. I think that's wonderful. It's a nice symbol, but symbols are easy. Anybody can go out and tie a yellow ribbon around a branch. A real show of support for the energy and sacrifices of our troops requires involvement on your part, on the part of individuals, and something that advances the tenets of democracy. Within...with involvement, without involvement, democracy stagnates. MCAT is involved, and you can help celebrate the return of our troops and the 200th anniversary of our Bill of Rights by supporting MCAT's continuing efforts to give a voice to the citizenry of Missoula. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce. Any other public comment this evening?
I'm sure the most of you recognize me. But for the record, my name is Ron Preston. I'm a Vietnam veteran, a born and raised Missoula person, past city resident, past city property owner, past city employee. And I now live on the other side of Lola Creek, outside the city's jurisdiction. Came here tonight for a couple of reasons. First, I'd like to thank some of the aldermen. I really want to let some of you guys know that I'm really proud of you. Really appreciate what you've done, Larry, and truly to seal those flags there. Definitely proud of you. You too, Jack. God, I never thought I'd be saying "thank you" and "I'm proud of you" to a teamster. But anyway, all that aside, I really appreciate it. Got some other aldermen over here that I think everyone should be pleased with. Secondly, I wanted to express my disappointment and disgust from Mayor Chemus and a couple of other council members here. I really don't know what to think about some of you folks. I could sit here and say, "You've been duped." I could sit here and think that you didn't know any better, but you're smarter than that. I would certainly hope so. So I'd only have to conclude that where you were is intentional. You know, when you think back about some of these things, suppose they gave a war and nobody came, and being a conscientious objector and speaking out against the war, it all sounds really good. Sounds great, guys. Suppose they gave a war and only Saddam Hussein came. Can't tolerate it. And for those of you who recognize that it can't be tolerated, I'm pleased, and I should not have to explain it to the others. Over 20 years ago, I was in Vietnam and came home and took a look at the attitude, Mr. Chemus, and I took a look at the attitude, Mr. Rice. I probably made it home before you did. And it's disgusting, guys. Every Vietnam veteran and every person who supports their country and allows for these things that we call freedom to exist, to have you here by everyone else's gift and to have you be a downer is not acceptable. Plainly not acceptable. To have you go to a Healing the Wounds of War Conference and to have another person there who is a conscientious objector to allow them to provide input and have you be the downer, that was one of the wounds of the war, and to open and be the downer, you know better. The United States is the finest, the smartest, one of the most progressive. We've come farther than anyone, done more for our people. We deliver more opportunity than any nation in the world. And, guys, we all ought to be proud. To look at yellow ribbons down Brook Street...you know, I was driving down the street here the other day, and I had a man in town who was here on business from Maryland, and he looked at our street and he said, "You know, after 20 years, after 20 years to see these kinds of things, it finally feels good to be an American again." You understand that, Mr. Chemus? It finally feels good to be an American again.
Do you want me to answer, Ron?
I really think that the people ought to be so up in arms that they ought to be asking why you people are sitting here. They ought to be asking why, if you can sit here and actually say, "I can't support the killing," when none of you show up for a protest unless it's against the United States. I didn't hear a single word from you guys when Saddam Hussein was killing Kurds by the thousands. Don't they matter? Killing them by the thousands, killing his own people by the thousands. This is not a debate discussion. You can take it up with the council. Folks, the veterans from the Vietnam War and the veterans from this war are coming home. They're coming home proud, and we will not tolerate any more wounds from downers. You see? You folks, Dan, Willie, Fred, you didn't address the wounds of war. You're really a part of the wounds of war, and I don't believe anyone should accept it from a council member or others anymore. Thanks again.
Thank you, Ron. Any other comments?
Hello, my name is Randy Erickson. I live at 917 East Beckwood, and I'm speaking to you tonight as the ex-officio representative to the City Council from the Associated Students of the University of Montana. And I have two items to present to the City Council from ASUM. I think perhaps the easiest way to do this would be to just read them. Whereas the problems of the developmentally disabled affect either directly or indirectly every member of our community, and whereas Mayor...the mayor of Missoula, Daniel Chemus, has issued a proclamation declaring March of 1991 developmentally disabled month, therefore be it resolved by the Associated Students of the University of Montana that we endorse Mayor Chemus's proclamation declaring March 1991 developmentally disabled month. This was passed last Wednesday at the university. The other presentation that I have for you is equally simple. Whereas the city of Missoula has arranged to purchase the Rattlesnake Greenway, and whereas the greenway will be utilized as a city recreational area, and whereas the purchase of the greenway will benefit all of Missoula, and whereas the greenway purchase will enhance the aesthetic value of the city, thereby inherently enhancing the aesthetic value and appeal of the University of Montana campus, therefore be it resolved that the Associated Students of the University of Montana encourage Montana congressmen to work to secure as much federal funding allocated through congressional appropriation as is necessary to successfully and adequately complete the Rattlesnake Greenway project. This was also passed last Wednesday. These two resolutions that ASUM has passed, sort of congratulatory resolutions and supportive resolutions to you, were sponsored by Senator Ed Tinsley and written by myself on behalf of the SLA Committee. The second one that I presented to you will be sent to our congressman as well and may proceed a campaign of some sort at the university to further encourage Congress to provide the funding needed to purchase the greenway. So, thank you from ASUM.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Just a question, Ms. Erickson.
Yes?
Do you think that the ASUM would support a dollar fee on the students at the university for upkeep of the park system and the greenway if the city asked for it?
It's quite possible, actually. As you...as you may or may not be aware, the university's students are currently being taxed to death, if you will...
Overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly, yes.
...by a variety of different fees that have been imposed upon us by the administration and the Board of Regents. However, that's a very distinctive possibility, knowing the clientele of the university, the students that go there, and knowing that most of them would definitely utilize the greenway. I would...I couldn't, of course, say anything definite...
I understand that.
...but that's a definite possibility. I will bring that up for next meeting on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Anyone else like to address the council? If not, we'll go on to the public hearings that have been scheduled this evening. The first is a hearing on two city council ward redistricting possibilities. We have a staff report for us.
I'm Doris Fisher from the Office of Community Development. The goal of the ward redistricting project is to achieve equal population levels amongst our city council wards in order to uphold the one-person, one-vote principle dictated to state and local governments by the U.S. Supreme Court. Our target date is to make the ward boundary adjustments by April 1st so that the Board of County Commissioners has time to approve any associated voter precinct boundary changes by April 29th, which begins the city council election filing period. In light of the city's recent annexations, Rattlesnake Lands, the Bellevue-Uptia area, and East Cold Springs, we currently have a situation where Ward 1 and Ward 5 are significantly larger in population than Wards 2, 3, 4, and 6. In recent weeks, the city council's Judicial Review Committee has developed two possible scenarios for how to reduce the size of Wards 1 and 5 and increase the size of the others. I should note that changes made now will need to be reassessed and no doubt reworked in 1993, given the state's plan to redo its house district boundaries at that time. So what we are doing here is making a set of temporary adjustments. I should further note that the population figures we are working with are estimates. Those estimates have been derived from a combination of 1980 census numbers and the 1990 census preliminary count of housing units and group living quarters. Final population figures from the 1990 census will not be available until July of this year. Our population estimates give us a total city population of 42,769, so that 7,128 is the ideal population for each of our six wards. Our standard is to come to within plus or minus 5 percent of this ideal ward size. As an indicator of the task, Ward 1 exceeds the ideal ward size by 30 percent, and Ward 5 exceeds it by 46 percent. The others fall below it. If the council is willing, I'd like to briefly describe the key features of each of the two scenarios coming out of the Judicial Review Committee at this time. I'm gonna take my mic with me. First, I'll briefly describe scenario number one. Would it help if I turn the maps towards you guys?
We've seen them over here, Doris, so...
Okay.
And you can still see them. We can't.
But it's for the...okay.
We've all gone through this about nine times.
Okay. In scenario number one, I'm going to start at the top, the north end of the city, and move downward. Actually, I'll start at Ward 1, which is the blue. The steps, the key steps in this particular scenario would be to delete Precincts 3, cross-hatched in red, and Precinct 39, cross-hatched in yellow, from Ward 1. Precinct 3 would go into Ward 2, and Precinct 39 would go into Ward 3. The next step would be to delete the northeast portion of Precinct 36A, which is currently in Ward 4, and relocate that into Ward 3. Subsequently, we would merge the remainder portion of Precinct 36A, which is Dornblazer Field and the University Golf Course, into Precinct 40 as part of Ward 4. We would delete Precinct 34 from Ward 5 and add it to Ward 4, which is the orange. Then we would delete Precinct 41, also a part of Ward 5 currently, and put that with Ward 4. Precinct 30, which is also currently part of Ward 5, would move over to Ward 6. And then Precinct 16A, which is the pink cross-hatched, heading out South Avenue west of Reserve, would come from Ward 6 into Ward 5. Finally, up here along the Clark Fork, we would delete Precinct 66A from Ward 2. Currently, that's the only portion of Ward 2 that jumps the Clark Fork. We would delete that from Ward 2 and add it, along with the recent Russell Street annexation, into Ward 6. In addition to these larger kinds of relocations, we would also be looking at five adjustments, relatively minor adjustments to voter precinct boundaries. Moving over to scenario 2, we would begin similarly in this case, such that Ward 1 and Ward 2 would end up being the same in scenario 2 as they are in scenario 1. This time, we would delete Precinct 34 from Ward 5 and put it into Ward 6. We would retain this part of Precinct 36A in Ward 4. Precinct 41, which is currently in Ward 5, would come into Ward 4. And Precinct 30, which is currently in Ward 5, would remain in Ward 5. The Precinct 16A, which is currently in Ward 6, would remain in Ward 6. We would make a... We would make a similar adjustment along the Clark Fork with Precinct 66A and the Russell Street annexation. Again, in this case, we would be looking at five smaller precinct boundary adjustments in connection with this scenario, although not the same precinct boundary adjustments as in the first scenario. And anyone with questions about those more minor adjustments, I'd be happy to answer them. The effect of both scenarios is to bring each ward to within plus or minus 5% of the ideal ward size using our estimated numbers. These scenarios are available for public review at both the Office of Community Development and the City Attorney's Office. We have reviewed the scenarios with the Missoula Neighborhood Network with no particular problems or issues identified. The Board of County Commissioners and the county election staff have also reviewed the scenarios and have suggested a few of the finer precinct boundary adjustments. The county has indicated a preference for scenario number 2. And with that, I'll stop and be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Reedy.
You might add, Doris, that this public hearing will be continued through next week, right?
That's right.
Any other questions for Doris at this time? Thank you, Doris. Is there any public comment on this proposed redistricting? If not, we will continue the public hearing until next week. We'll go on to a hearing on a proposal to relocate U.S. Highway 93 to Reserve Street from Brooks to Reserve Street from Brooks Street to I-90.
Thank you. My name is Joe Aldegary. I'm the Public Works Director for the city. As you heard, there is a proposal from the Department of Highways to relocate the existing Highway 93 to a different route. And I thought that perhaps to go through this process is I'd like to, first of all, show where the routes are currently inside the city of Missoula. And it's amazing what happens when you start driving the streets of Missoula from a tourist standpoint rather than a citizen, and you find out that there are some confusing things inside the city. First of all, Interstate 90, we're all familiar with, traverses the city on the north part. Highway 200 comes in through east Missoula, goes under the freeway, on Broadway, and follows Broadway all the way out to the Y. U.S. 12 follows Interstate 90 as it comes in through town, comes to Van Buren, you get off at Van Buren, a little piece of Broadway, across the Madison Street Bridge, 5th and 6th Street couplet, down Brooks, and then up the Bitterroot. Business Highway 12 starts at Madison, and Broadway continues on Broadway to Higgins, and down Higgins, and where it rejoins Highway 12 at the 5th Street. Highway 93 comes up from the Bitterroot, comes up to Stevens, up Stevens to Orange, from Orange, across the bridge to Broadway, and then goes west, okay? Contrary to what a lot of people believe, that it goes to the freeway. It does not. Okay, it goes out Broadway all the way to the Y, and then north from the Y to up to Kalispell. There is no Highway 10. Even though we have a lot of businesses and a lot of signs out there that say Highway 10, Highway 10 no longer exists. It was replaced by I-90. There is no Highway 10 in the state of Montana anymore, even though we have Highway 10 west and Highway 10 east. And I believe east Missoula is called Highway 10 where it goes through east Missoula. There's no such highway. What the proposal is, is to relocate Highway 93 as is shown in blue here. Give me a second here to turn this map around. Is to do this, is to take Highway 93, which incidentally, if you're coming in from west, or from Spokane, or for that matter, coming down on the Flathead, when you get to the Y, it directs you to get off the freeway right now and come in on Old Highway 10, which is Highway 93. But it brings you, like I said, all the way in on Broadway. What the proposal is, is to take Highway 93 from the Y to Reserve Street, and then south on Reserve to Brooks, where it rejoins Highway 93. Also, one of the things that, as we discussed with the Missoula Downtown Association last Tuesday, I believe, and they pretty much supported this with a provision that we have a business U.S. 93 retained through the city. And this, thought in the Department of Highways, would be our suggestion, is to take Business 93 from Reserve Street, bring it in here to Orange, get off at Orange Street, and then back down here, and we reconnect with the new 93. If you drive the freeways and look for signs and things, it's right now, it's really confusing on how we direct cars. This, I feel, would really clean up a lot of the problems that we're having. The biggest thing, the reason for this, is that we have traffic problems inside the city. And this is a proposal to divert the traffic, which normally would not come through the city of Missoula, to allow them to bypass it and go down a branded road, which we'll have here, and then out. At the same time, we would have a well-marked, well-signed business route for those people who do want to stop in our community and shop. Part of this proposal is also an exchange of maintenance responsibilities. Starting right now, starting at 39th Street, 39th, Reserve Street from 39th to the Old Highway is a state route, okay? And they are responsible for the maintenance of that route. From Old Highway 93 to Central is a city street, which the city of Missoula is responsible for the maintenance. From Central to Mullen, well, to Mullen is county, and they are responsible for all the maintenance. The signal at Third and Reserve is a joint responsibility. From Mullen Road to the ramps at Broadway is a city street. And the ramps and Reserve Street to the freeway is a state. Part of the proposal is that if this becomes a state highway, the state then would become responsible for all of the maintenance of this roadway all the way from Brooks up to the freeway. In return, I've placed on your table the map. If you look at the map, okay, you'll see on Reserve Street some dots and some dashes. As part of this proposal, is the state would take over the maintenance of all the Reserve Street, and in exchange, we would take over the maintenance of certain of their routes inside the city. In other words, an exchange, pretty much dollar for dollar, or maintenance responsibilities for maintenance responsibilities. The routes that they would propose for us to take over the maintenance is Van Buren from the freeway to Missoula Avenue, Patty Canyon Drive from Higgins up to the city limits, a piece of South Avenue from Russell west to the tracks, 3rd Street from Russell to west to Reserve, and a little piece of Mullen Road from Broadway west to the city limits. You look confused, right? And I think that concludes. Does the council have any questions?
Mrs. Schaefer.
Do you think, or have they already, has the State Department of Highways already agreed to sign that as a business route?
I just talked to Jim Weaver earlier tonight, and he says yes, they agree.
Any other questions for Joe? Joe, it was my impression from listening to the Downtown Association. Is there anyone here from the Downtown Association that's going to testify this evening? It was my impression that what they were most acutely interested in was signing that would get people to the downtown, even if it wasn't a matter of saying that it was alternative 93. But they were concerned, and I thought that you did a good job of presenting to them some of the difficulty in figuring out how you get to the downtown. But I wonder if your reading of that meeting was the same as mine, or...
Well, the reading I got was they, I guess they weren't too concerned about exactly where this business route was going to go, because I don't think they already talked in specific terms of where it was going to go, but just that it'd be signed in such a manner that it would lead people into the downtown area. Interestingly enough, you know, we have a Business 93 designated now inside the city, and it's just, and as you're coming east on Broadway, you'd go past Orange to Higgins, down Higgins, across the bridge, and then back over to here. Now, that is signed Business 93. But the ironic part about that is, is that if you're a tourist, you'll never know it exists. Because as you approach in this direction, there is no sign that says, "Go straight." There is no sign that says, "Business District." There is no sign that says, "Business 93." Similarly, as you head south on Orange Street, when you get there, there's a sign that says, "Business District, turn left." There is no sign that says that there is a Business 93. And similarly, as you come in on Broadway, there is no sign which says, "Go straight." It says, "Business District," but does not say, "To Business 93." The point being is that the average person from outside the community would never take, is not taking this route now because they have no way of knowing it exists.
Got it.
Pat Simmons called me this morning and said that they, that the Downtown Association would have a meeting tomorrow morning, and wondered if we could keep this hearing open until at least the committee meeting tomorrow afternoon, when they could come up with a more authoritative or endorsed statement on the routes. I have one other question of Joe, too.
Please.
What about North Orange? What about the North Orange, the underpass part? Would that still be ma, who would maintain that?
The maintenance responsibility on Orange Street would not change. It would still be the Department of Highways. That's still a state route. That's a dashed line on your map. All the dashed lines, the diagonal dashed line routes on the, on your map, are state routes, and they maintain those. And they would continue to maintain that underpass. We, of course, do it under contract for them, but it would still be their responsibility.
I have one other question.
Mrs. Schaefer.
What about the signage on the interstate, then, for those who want to come through or want to go down 93, but they're coming from the east and would normally turn onto Orange Street?
Okay, right now, as you approach from the east, and there are signs which tells you, "Take the Orange Street exit to Highway 93." It doesn't call it 93. It says that you use that to go to 93, okay? If this were signed, if this became then the Business 93, then there would be adequate advanced signing, which would say, "Business 93, you get off at Orange Street or straight up to go Highway 93 north."
Any other questions for Joe? Thank you, Joe. Is there any other public testimony?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's David Owen. I'm representing the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to distribute this statement. Before settling into more serious comments, I would suggest to you that all of this confusion that you see in the situation probably ought not be blamed on the Highway Department. I've got this nagging fear that some of that was conjured in a chamber of boardrooms 50 years ago, and we were talking about the same situation. So we'll tread lightly on that, if I could take a second to distribute this. My comments will go a little bit beyond this. It looks uncharacteristically brief for me, and it is. The Missoula Chamber of Commerce supports the Highway Department's need to move traffic through the urban area in an efficient manner. The Chamber also understands that moving through Missoula is not necessarily the need of all highway traffic. The Missoula business community is very dependent on streets and highways for transportation of goods and its customers. Changing highway designations and/or routes can have an impact on businesses along the old routes and can also impact our development patterns along new routes. I think it's important to note here that we're, as a business organization, not trying to scare anybody and say, "Jesus, it'll be the end of the business community as you know it." However, these things have an impact. It's hard to measure, and you kind of trust the folks who have a sense of where their business comes from. We started out several months ago when this discussion first started at a Chamber of Transportation meeting and made a commitment to the Highway Department that we would try to find out if folks were concerned. And we found out that there is a certain level of concern about what this might do in terms of traffic. So we are trying to be balanced and make the council aware that there is that concern in the business community. There is no argument that the use of Reserve Street as a primary highway route makes sense in traffic terms. I find myself, if I'm in the south end of town, I got stopped at a restaurant parking lot in the south end of town no more than two weeks ago. Someone said, "We're trying to get to Kalispell. How would you recommend we do it?" I didn't do anything that's on the dashed line there. We were two blocks from Reserve. Go down the light, turn right, and keep traveling. The Chamber asks the city to help in the evaluation of an opportunity, which Joe Aldegary has pointed out, of changing the Highway 93 route through Missoula. This route could be a business loop or a business district. And one of the things we understand is that you may have to rethink a seemingly automatic connection that says that the Highway Department has blessed it in some regard. It carries funding with it. That may or may not be possible, given a business loop. I guess our advocacy would be if it's a kind of an unofficial or health-oriented business loop, that we not get hung up on that issue out of fairness to the state to help them make a decision, which, as represented to me, would make this a little unusual. The route through Missoula could also be restructured, as you've seen here, creating perhaps some combined or new or more efficient routes. The Chamber firmly believes that it's in the best interest of the city, of the business community, and the traveling public to maintain a practice which we've had of helping visitors find their way through the city, use the services and goods that we have here, enjoy our city, find their way back to their route, and ultimately onto their original destination. One question is brought up as I talk to folks in the southern end of the Business District, mainly the folks at South Gate Mall. Their concern was a timing concern. Is this going to be done before Reserve Street is reconstructed? And does that make sense, given the traffic loads that are there now? They're also concerned about some kind of designation, obviously, that would help traffic keep flowing through where some of the businesses are. I would repeat what Councilmember Schaefer has said in terms of, my work with the Downtown Association has indicated that their board meetings tomorrow morning, and they would like this, at least for written comment or in some form, an opportunity held open. I can tell you, there's four or five other folks I've talked to that chose not to take time. If it's important for you to see them, to ask them questions, and there's an extension of the hearing, they would be glad to come down. If they could get away with having me come down so they didn't have to do that, they thought that was okay, too. It's one of those questions. We certainly appreciate the Highway Department's willingness to explore this alternative. I think as you find communities, they try to avoid too much of a defocus of their purpose in moving traffic. So I appreciate the Highway Department's willingness to consider this, and I think it opens up some great opportunities for Missoula to come up with a more coherent system to meet a number of needs, not only for the Downtown Association, but for established business, while we contemplate something that certainly makes sense, and that's moving that traffic that chooses to move through our community in an efficient manner. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Are there any questions for Mr. Owen?
Joe Aldegary again. Dave raised one interesting question, that's the timing. This contract... This contract would be effective in July of 92. However, the signing and everything would not be completed until Reserve Street is completed. Okay? It would probably coincide with that project. In fact, what would probably happen is as we're building the Reserve Street project, as part of the signing contract, they would install the appropriate signs. So, the Reserve Street project would be completed at the time that this route change would take place.
Speaking of timing, Joe, is there a kind of urgency here that would militate against us holding this open for a week in case all the council members would like to hear from the Downtown Association? Or do we need to get it out of?
I don't think, I don't think holding it a week would cause any problems. We are having a meeting on April 4th with the Department of Highways to go over the final plans for the signals and the signing for the Reserve Street project. So, if you held it a week, I don't see where that would cause any problems. Additionally, the Highway Department has also asked that the county commissioners hold a public hearing on this, the same item. And I haven't got word from the county, but Horace Brown indicated probably a week from Wednesday, when the county commissioners will hold this hearing. In addition, the one thing I didn't touch on is on that map, you'll notice that certain portions of Reserve Street are now county, and that's the long dashes. In exchange for the Department of Highways assuming those maintenance responsibilities, they are also asking the county to assume some maintenance responsibilities on state routes in the county. Okay? I didn't bring those up tonight, but, and they're way off our map, they're primarily out west of the airport, some of the frontage roads and some of those things. And once again, they, the idea is a even swap in terms of the maintenance responsibility in terms of cost.
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Reedy.
Joe, there's absolutely no chance that both Russell and Reserve will be closed at the same time.
Not if I can help it. That's a plan. The schedule we have worked out right now is that, in anticipation of the Reserve Street project occurring in September or October, the contract being awarded, in addition, probably around June or July, we will be starting the sewer line work on Reserve Street and all the utility work that has to be done. Our goal is to have the Russell Street underpass and the paving from Third Street south to the tracks done before we start closing off portions of Reserve Street. The pavement on Russell is so bad, we have to get that paved, because we anticipate traffic volume's going to go up on Russell Street for a couple of years while this other one is being built. You know? Good question, Jack. That's our plan.
Any other questions? Well, Joe is up. All right. Thank you. Any other testimony? If not, is there any objection from members of the council to continuing this until a week from tonight? All right, then we will continue the hearing until a week from tonight. Go on to communications from the mayor. I appreciate Ron Preston's remarks this evening. I obviously do not enjoy them that much, but I do appreciate both Ron and some other citizens going out of their way to come out and speak about important public matters. It's obviously a key to our democracy that that should happen. I also think that democracy works best when our conversations with each other are honest. It's sometimes a lot of fun to accuse one another of this and that and to take delight in disagreeing with what we think or might wish that somebody had said, but this is, I think, an important subject of discussion, and we'll get more out of it by having an honest conversation rather than an inflammatory one. And to the extent that I myself have contributed to inflaming the situation, I've already said that, that I regret. But the sentiments that I have expressed, I don't regret, simply because I think that they do raise topics that we need to talk about. The theme of my remarks at the Wounds of War Conference was excellence. It was a theme of what it is that we do well. And the main thrust of my theme of my remarks was that there are many, many things that we do very well as a people, and that being able to acknowledge what we do well is a very important part of what it is to be a good society. There are many, many sources of pride that we rightly have available to us then. And I also said then, and have said on several occasions, and genuinely mean, that one of those sources of genuine pride is the excellence of the American military, which I believe that we, as a people, have maintained a commitment to, and that the commitment to excellence on the part of the military was evident throughout this most recent engagement. My concern is that as a self-governing people, that on the level of the federal government, that we find less and less that we honestly take pride in. And it, I guess that I'm a little bit bemused by the fact that I would say that most of the time, that the conservatives in this country would agree with me about that, that they generally find relatively little that the federal government does, that they would actually stand up and say, "That we are genuinely proud of." We can argue about that and we can have honest arguments about it, but the concern that I have is that, to the extent that we find that by far the deepest kind of pride that we can take in the federal government is in its undoubted excellence in the area of the military, that that needs to be a subject of concern to us. And I think that that was reflected in Mr. Preston's remarks themselves, because what was said there was that, finally, we have something to be proud of again. And yes, that's true, and I have no quarrel with the being proud. But I think that we owe it to ourselves to ask whether there is a problem in the narrowing base of what it is that we can be proud of the federal government about. And I realize that what people really would like to hear me saying there is that we should not be proud of anything. That obviously is not what I'm saying. And I think that anybody who will listen honestly will know, that, well, it might be fun to think that that's what I'm saying, but that's not it. But at any time that a country gets into the position where it's harder and harder to find anything that one level of government does that you feel genuinely proud about, then that becomes a matter of concern. I consider that to be a serious concern, and I can make no apologies for raising it. We'll go on now to the consent agenda. Chuck, do you want to read the items, and then we'll see whether anyone wants to remove any of them?
Two items on the consent agenda tonight. Item A, confirmation of Dave Hayden as police officer, and B, postponement of sidewalk installation at 916 Southwest Higgins.
Okay. Does anyone want to remove either of these items? If not, Mrs. Schaefer?
I would like to introduce Dave Hayden, who is here hoping to be confirmed as a new police officer.
Dave, will you stand, please? Thank you. Appreciate your being here. I also appreciate those of you who are just leaving, who have attended our meeting this evening. Thank you for being here. Go ahead then and call the roll on the consent agenda.
Craig?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hermes?
Yes.
Lucina?
Yes.
McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Potts?
Yes.
Reedy?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Ten zero.
Okay, the motion carries. Dave, congratulations on your confirmation. Appreciate your service to the city. Committee reports, finance and license, Mr. Reedy.
Doug's yours. Mr. Harrison? There's this one action item, claims, although Coram was not present, the committee recommends the council approve claims totaling $172,219.21. I would still move. Did I pick up the wrong one?
I think you do have the wrong one.
Yes.
That was last week's, Doug.
Oh, I guess that wouldn't work, would it? I'd move, I'd move, I'd move the claims in the map of...
Your face is red.
Doug was trying to get another $100,000.
What were you going to do with the $100,000?
All right. You know what the motion is?
Yes.
All those, further discussion.
I hope the other members of the Finance Committee who didn't attend recognize what's going on here and will be more attentive in the future.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. Judicial review, Mr. Reedy.
Yes. The committee recommends that the council adopt a resolution to repeal City of Missoula Resolution Number 4684, adopted June 8th, 1987, to establish Heritage Day, legal holiday, and I was so moved, and I would like Joy Earls to come up and... Did she leave?
No.
Joy?
And fill you in a little on this, please.
Joy Earls, Personnel EEO Officer. In June of 1987, you passed Resolution 4684, which was based on the legislature that year had created Heritage Day, and the employees voted on Heritage Day on the day they would like to have Heritage Day, and that was decided as the Friday after Thanksgiving. So, your resolution created Heritage Day for the Friday after Thanksgiving. This year in the legislature, they've just passed Senate Bill 78, which created Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, which will be celebrated on the third Monday of every January. The bill also then took away the Heritage Day. And so, what this resolution that's before you now is repealing the Heritage Day, which you set up on Resolution 4684, and setting Martin Luther King Day for that third Monday in January.
Any questions for Joy? All right. Thank you, Joy. Since this is a resolution, we'll invite public comment. Is there any public comment on this resolution?
I did have a comment from an employee. Because the bill did not have an effective date, the date it would go into effect would be October 1st of this year. Therefore, Heritage Day this year, well, there will not be a Heritage Day for the day after Thanksgiving, since this bill would go into effect October 1st. And there is an option, it's not in this resolution, but if the council wished to have a Heritage Day prior to October 1st, you could have that in addition to Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. And it was not included in this resolution, because it's obviously up to the council to decide on whether you wish to do that or not. I don't, do you have any questions about that? The state, this year is celebrating Heritage Day on July 5th, and then they will celebrate Martin Luther King Jr. Day on the third Monday in January.
Is there any talk then about bringing before the council a resolution to have the city do the same?
Well, that would be up to the council. We discussed it in committee, and I believe the committee was, there weren't very many members at the meeting, so...
I would think the sooner we act on that, the sooner people can start planning accordingly. Mr. Reedy?
Don and I were the only two committee people there, and I, Don, was I right, assuming that, remembering that you said that we could act on this later when there was more input was up from other members?
Yes, I think the thing that we needed to do tonight was repeal this resolution. And if there is a desire to celebrate Heritage Day and therefore have two legal holidays in the one fiscal year, or not two, but another extra one, we could discuss that later. It's a different issue than repealing this.
Mr. Rice?
It seems to me that if the effective date of the legislation is October 1, and if the, and I don't believe that there will be any danger of the third Monday in January occurring before October 1st for the balance of the year, that there is no pressing need to actually repeal the Heritage Day holiday until such time as we have addressed this other issue. Now, maybe I've got that all wrong, but I don't see, I mean, there will be time, both between now and October 1, to decide whether we want to have the 5th of July as the Heritage Day for this year, and to strike the day after Thanksgiving from this year, and also to deal with the situation for January of next year. Now, and I don't know, you talked, I couldn't tell from the minutes whether that was even being entertained, but it seems to me that if there is some thought on the part of the council that the, there would be an additional paid holiday, and it would be in next fiscal year, not in this fiscal year, that we should, in fact, discuss that. I agree, we should do it soon, but I think we should probably, if that's going to be contemplated, I'd like to wrap it all up in one resolution than to have another one that reestablishes the repealed Heritage Day holiday for the 5th of July rather than, which is essentially what we would have to do in order to reinstate, or to give the 5th of July off.
Mr. Reedy?
I think it was the intent of the, in fact, I know it was the intent of the two people that were there, to do this first step. First, we can do the other step anytime we want, or later.
Dan?
Mr. Rice?
My point is, Jack, if you intend to celebrate Heritage Day on the 5th of July this year, then you will have to reinstate by Resolution Heritage Day in order to do that, because this particular resolution on the floor removes it.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
The problem I have with this whole thing is when we passed Martin Luther King Holiday, there was a lot of talk from everybody on this council that it was going to replace Heritage Day, period. And I passed on that vote. I didn't believe that this was the way to go about it, but everyone else here voted to replace Heritage Day with Martin Luther King Day. And if that's what we did then, and we're sitting here looking at it again, that's what we need to do now. So, I think that this resolution is, in fact, timely, needs to be done at this time, and Heritage Day disappeared two months ago.
Further discussion. Mrs. Schaefer?
I think part of the confusion is due to the fiscal year and the calendar year. We're dealing with two different periods of time here. And if we had a Heritage Day, and as Fred said, if we had one after we repeal this, we would have to reinstate this, if we had a Heritage Day as the state is doing on July 5th, then there would be two holidays there that we would have to pay for, an extra one. And that was part of our problem, was because we're talking fiscal year, we're living the calendar year.
Mrs. Craig?
Well, it says that July 5th is...
July 5th would be the final Heritage Day, final annual Heritage Day. So, we would still have a Heritage Day this year and a Martin Luther King next year, but we aren't having a Martin Luther King this year. So, it would still be the same amount of holidays.
No, not in the fiscal year.
Oh, in the fiscal year.
Fiscal years start January 1st, I mean, July 1st.
Okay. I would still like to see us do that, though if the state is doing it and the county is doing it, I think the city should do that.
Mr. Rice?
I believe the minutes also reflect that the first year of implement- I believe the minutes also reflect that the first year of implementation, the implementation occurred too late to actually give the holiday, so there was a windfall there. I don't disagree with Larry's motion. My only concern is that if the council does intend to consider the July fifth date, that the prudent thing, although we are rapidly running out of prudence because of the amount of time we're spending on this, is to, to yank this resolution and, and try and put the two issues that are on the floor together, if that's possible.
Mr. Sterns.
In, going back to when Heritage Day was first enacted, in that year it would have passed in the legislature around this time. Presumably Heritage Day was done to replace the two presidents' holidays that we used to have, so in that first year, although there wouldn't have been a Heritage Day after Thanksgiving, you would have had the president's holiday of both Lincoln's and Washington's birthday that year. So, again, you get into the calendar year versus fiscal year as to whether or not and when there was any loss of holiday.
Further discussion, Joy?
To add to that, that fiscal, fiscal year eighty-eight, there was one less holiday in that year. You go from July of, uh, July of eighty-seven to June of eighty-eight, there was only one president's holiday and no Heritage Day in that year. We did not celebrate the first Heritage Day until November of eighty-eight. So that one fiscal year, the city did have one less holiday. So if you're looking at balancing the slate, I guess, this would, this would add one this fiscal year, but it would make up for the one back in FY eighty-eight.
Mr. Reedy.
I think in order to avoid more committee work, I'll request that this be taken back to committee.
Okay, um, before we do that, if you don't mind, Marshall seems to want to address the council, we may as well hear from him.
Marshall Kyle, city employee. I'll speak from my, I, I don't think the city employees know exactly what's going on here at all. Uh, this is brought up in department head meeting, and I find none of my employees know what's going on, and I doubt that any of the rest do. What surprises me, uh, is the fact that, uh, every time I receive a document across my desk establishing holidays for a year, it's on a calendar basis. And now, all of a sudden, everything's on a fiscal basis, when it'll knock out a holiday, possibly. I have some real problems with that. I receive documents, uh, from the state establishing state holidays. I can't remember one coming this year from the city, but I have received them from the city, but everything is on a calendar year when you speak of holiday. But now, all of a sudden, we're speaking of fiscal year when, when we can knock out a holiday. I think if we're going to pass a resolution like that, this, that the employees should have some notification, should understand it.
All right, without objection, the matter will be returned to the Judicial Review Committee at the request of the chairman. And we will go on to the Public Safety Committee. They had a motion under the consent agenda, nothing more?
Nothing more.
Okay. And Public Works Committee, nothing more, Bill?
Motion under consent agenda, that's all.
Okay. We'll go on then to comments of city council members, Mr. Harrison.
No comment.
Mr. Hermes.
Just, uh, there was a letter in your pack that I sent to, uh, Les Hilliard. Anyone to review that? I also did speak to Les Page, uh, last week, and went over the letter with him before I sent it, and he made a few changes in the letter that he suggested. And, uh, he thought we were proceeding in a, in a good manner with this issue at this time. He also thought that waiting for the Arkansas decision was the only real choice we, we had at this point, so he, uh, thought we were proceeding in a good light at this, at this time.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. McGlaughlin.
I have two comments tonight, the first being that, uh, I spoke at a luncheon, uh, this, this afternoon, that, uh, was kind of a question and answer period at the end of it. And the ladies at the luncheon said that there would be a number of people in Missoula who would come to the council, council meeting if we had a speaker system that everybody could hear with. Uh, they say there's problems in the audience, especially when the doors are open and there's, there's more chairs and more seating, with being able to hear the council members due to the, to the poor public address system that's in this room. And if we could do something about that, maybe we ought to try and do that with the next budget and see if we can, uh, improve upon the system that we have, Chuck. It's just a comment that we're getting from the public.
Yeah, it does help if people turn off and then turn on their microphones, so that you don't hear cables slide across the desks.
All right. The other comment I have tonight is from Keith Capravica. He, uh, called me this week to express the concerns he had, that Jack addressed last week at the council meeting about the sewer system in the Bellevue-Wapakia area, and about the comments that were made at the last council meeting. Keith says that the figures that he expressed, from fifteen-hundred to twenty-six-hundred dollars, uh, maximum per property owner, uh, for the steps, system are accurate figures. He's got a pamphlet at home, a booklet at home, and a letter from the Mayor Lovegrove stating those figures at the time that this started. He does understand, uh, the problems with rising costs, uh, the problems with, the grant problems that we got from the state, and also, uh, the problems with not having everyone sign up, or more sign up than, than what we're expected. But he also feels that he may have been sold a bill of goods at the time, wanted to make sure that everybody understood that this was not an annexation problem. He wanted to make sure it was a separate issue, a sewer issue, and a water quality issue, not an annexation issue with him. He feels that even with the eighty percent hookup figure in the Bellevue-Wapakia, that two-hundred-and-sixteen homes are not getting sewer at that rate, and we'll still be dumping four-hundred-thousand gallons of sewage a day into the Missoula's aquifer. Uh, that's an alarming figure from that area. It's a, it's a figure that we need to take care of. It's a serious situation that this city faces, and, uh, it's, it's an issue that we need at, as a council to address, because to me, our groundwater, and, and to Keith, the statement he made was our groundwater is more important to this community than the Greenway and the Rattlesnake. And if in fact we can get the money for the Greenway, or allocate five-hundred-thousand dollars to the Greenway, we ought to be able to try and help make sure that this sewer system goes and becomes a reality in an area of town that needs it, so that we can protect our aquifer. It was also put to them during the public hearings that they had in the Bellevue-Wapakia area, that replacing their septic system with the conventional sewer system at the time would cost about the same amount of money. And that was true at that time, but now, the, uh, cost of conventional is fifty-two-hundred and fifty-seven dollars, and he can put two septic systems in for that now, not just one. So, he figures that we need to talk about this more, we need to sit down, and, and as soon as we do get the figures, we let out the bids, and we know what we're talking about, uh, this council needs to sit down and determine just how important this issue is to us, and what we can do to alleviate some of the costs.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin. Mr. Reedy.
On New Year's Day, I, uh, on New Year's Day, I lost a bet to Chuck Sterns, and this was the appointed day that I was supposed to pay off on the Notre Dame-Corredale game, which I still think wasn't a clip. But, uh, if we don't get done by nine o'clock, we're not gonna go this week, so when it gets to your Fred, talk a long time, will ya?
Mr. Potts?
No comment.
Or Mr. Rice?
Chuck, my, uh, mic doesn't turn off still. I actually didn't have any comments tonight until Ron spoke, and then I thought that, uh, I would, uh, try to put together some thoughts. I think the introductory comments that the mayor made are pretty appropriate, that, uh, dialogue's important, and it's important to be honest in that dialogue. Um, I felt, Ron, that you painted a number of us with a pretty broad brush. Uh, I'm not uncomfortable with being associated with either the mayor or with Will Wood, both of whom I think had made statements about, uh, various events that have occurred in the world, and who took positions over the last week or so. I think if you look carefully at the record, you'll find that I haven't done that. And the reason I haven't done it, Ron, is because I'm not entirely certain what my position is. I felt last week, the, of the, what I did sit through, uh, that Kathy Joseph's reading of Arne Hughes' poem was the one thing that I felt most comfortable with, uh, but I felt very uncomfortable with a lot of the other things that were occurring in the room at the time. I, I think that that, uh, goes without saying. But I just think that it's, it's rather presumptuous on your part to presume that you know what I think, on the basis of no statements at all, because I don't think that I've made any public statements since the sixteenth of January about what is going on in the Gulf to you. There are only two people in this room that I have made any kinds of statements to, and they have not commented. I don't believe they've spoken to you either. Um, I think that there are a lot of things that need to be said, uh, along the lines of Dan's, uh, comments on, uh, at the healing conference, which I had some hand in being involved in setting up, but I did not attend that conference, and I did not hear Dan's comments. So I would think it would be rather presumptuous of me to take Dan to task, uh, having not read his comments, and having not, uh, done anything except read what was in the Missoulian for broad, um, dissemination. I think that if you want to talk about what people think, and if you really do value what people think, you ought to talk to them about what it is that they think and believe. That, it seems to me, is what the Bill of Rights says. I believe we have the two-hundredth anniversary of the Bill of Rights upon us, and it seems to me that if we are fighting for anything, as some have suggested, we are fighting for freedom, that the freedoms we are fighting for are embedded in the Bill of Rights. And if they aren't doing that, then I don't know what we're doing in the Persian Gulf. Uh, as far as my sense of the way things will turn out, or anything else, I would be willing to bet, Ron, although I don't know, I'm presuming, that I've done as much reading and much, as much thinking about what's gone on in the Persian Gulf, and as much talking and listening as anybody in this room. I've sought out a whole host of people, and been sought out by a whole host of people about their opinions, and about my opinion. But I have not stated them publicly, because quite frankly, I have not formed any kind of solid opinion that I feel comfortable enough about to make as a public statement. Uh, I applaud Will's statement last week. I think that it took a tremendous amount of courage to make that statement in the face of, uh, what is clearly overwhelming, um, uh, was overwhelming sentiment, and that's what I think it is, to not say those sorts of things. Uh, the thing that did disturb me most about, uh, what happened last week, the things that disturbed me about, most about what, what happened here in this room last week, I did not speak about. If I'd felt, as Will did, I would have voted no on that particular motion, but quite frankly, I did not feel the way that Will did. Although I applaud him for, for making the statement that he did and saying what he did. Uh, if you have, if you want to engage, Ron, in some sort of a dialogue, instead of a harangue, then I think that that's fine, and you know that I'll be happy to do that with you. But, uh, to come up here and take cheap shots at people, I think it is very self-serving, and of such limited utility, that it seems to me that having to respond to them, uh, probably dignifies them far beyond, uh, any content that they might have had. And I really think that that's a misuse of our time, even if Jack does want me to fill up the time between now and nine o'clock.
Mrs. Schaefer.
No comment.
Mr. Wood.
Oh, about three Mondays ago, I was, um, riding my bike home on Sherwood Street, and oh, about two blocks ahead, I, um, started to hear a woman screaming, and it looked like this guy was dragging her into his car. And so I, by the time I got up there on my bike, he already had her in there. And so it's always one of those uncertain situations when you're out there, whether, you know, to get involved in a domestic situation, 'cause you don't know what the person's gonna do. So I went over and knocked on the window and see if I could try to intervene. And the guy turned to me and he goes, "She's my wife." God, I mean, I'm just tired of that attitude of, of men taking women and beating them and dragging them in the car, I mean, and that's one of the reasons why I'm just so tired of disglorification of violence as a way of solving conflicts. And then, the other situation that disturbed me was watching the, uh, LA police, um, beat that black man. I mean, after a while, God, it just turns your stomach, you know, what makes somebody feel in their heart that they have to keep beating on this person, it was like forty-six times? Guess I just don't understand it. That's all.
Mr. Liscino.
Well, I'd like to, um, briefly comment on, uh, your remarks, uh, Dan, and your quote. I wasn't at the conference, uh, that day, but I'm willing to accept your explanation that, in context, uh, your remarks were targeted at the, uh, federal government. I don't think your remarks were targeted at the citizenry of the United States and of, uh, our accomplishments. And if that's true, then, uh, personally, I don't have a problem with, uh, the theme of the remarks. I heard some sad news today, maybe some of you did, that, um, a soldier who was stationed in the Gulf who manned a Patriot missile battery, uh, was in Detroit, and he was packing, uh, his, the, the things up. He, evidently, he and his wife and children were gonna move to another city, and, uh, he was in the process of loading a van, and, uh, he was shot five times, and his car was stolen. And this man lost his life on the streets of Detroit, and did not lose his life in a war zone. And, uh, perhaps that exemplifies that, uh, that our military is highly professional, to the point where we did save so many lives, which I'm thankful for, but when we come home to our own cities, uh, the roosters come home to roost, and it, it shows that we have problems at home to take care of, and I trust that President Bush, and I take him at his word, that he will put a lot of attention now on our problems at home, to the same degree that he prosecuted the war. I received a phone call from Tallinn, Estonia the other night, uh, and I thought I'd relay it to the citizens of Missoula, and to you folks. This, uh, person was, uh, part of the Tallinn Chamber Choir who was here in Missoula last summer, and this is a choir of exceptional quality who travels all over the world on invitation to many countries. And, uh, they were, they, uh, told me, or they, they wanted to pass on to me, to pass on to people in Missoula, that out of all of the cities that they have traveled to, and all of the countries, uh, by far and away, their most enjoyable and memorable trip thus far was to the United States and to Missoula in particular. They will never forget, uh, the time that we showed them last summer. And this was told to me on the evening of the referendum in the Soviet Union, which Estonia is one of six, uh, republics boycotting that, that vote, and, uh, uh, they're very uncertain, and they go from day to day as to their own future, but they wanted me to pass that on to the people of Missoula, and I was very glad and proud to hear that. Um, I'd also like to congratulate the men and women of the grizzly basketball teams for their fine seasons and the jobs that they did in the playoffs. And finally, I'd like to encourage the citizens of Missoula to, uh, attend the Passion Play that's gonna be put on by the Christian Life Center, uh, this coming weekend and the weekend next. There's a twenty-four-piece live orchestra, and a conductor being flown in from Florida, musical voices of exceptional quality, and the true meaning of Easter. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Mrs. Craig.
Uh, this is a unique setting. People get a microphone, a TV camera, a captive audience, and three minutes or more to say whatever they want to. Sometimes it's stimulating and interesting and articulate. Sometimes it's people with big egos that like to hear themselves expound and take this opportunity to do that. We just have to sit and- We just have to sit and take it. I sort of feel like tonight was one of those nights.
We'll go on to comments from staff. Marshall?
Marshall Kyle, Assistant Fire Chief. This is what I came for here. On a little lighter note, and locally, last Wednesday and Thursday, we received two new pieces of fire apparatus. These were, this is the final order that we will receive that was approved by the voters in the nineteen-eighty-eight GeoBond issue. One is a ninety-five-foot Baker aerial scope ladder truck. The second one is a triple combination pumper, Mack-Grunman design. But what we'd like to do is invite all the citizens of Missoula and the governing body, the council, and the city administration to an open house on Saturday between ten and three to view this new equipment. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Marshall. Any other staff comment? Chuck?
Can I get the, run the sirens? Do you have a siren?
Chuck?
You'll notice that the camera behind Bob Lucino and Will Wood is gone tonight. The, we installed fifteen hundred dollars worth of conduit, which is the two-and-a-half-inch conduit, which I'm told by the technicians in the hallway appears to have solved the problem of the poor camera work and the fact that the cameras were malfunctioning. It apparently was caused by the high level of radio interference in this location being located near the radio station, Missoula County Courthouse, nine-one-one, and Police Department.
Thank you. Chuck? Any other staff comment? Are there any items of new business?
I'm not sure that I have an item of new business, but in order to prepare you for a referral here and so that you will know what's going on, I have received this evening a letter from Jeff Bernbaum, the Director of the Missoula Youth Homes, indicating that they would like a postponement of the public hearing that's been set on their rezoning request from March twenty-fifth to April eighth. And so, in compliance with that request, I have referred that item to the PAZ Committee. And at the same time, in order to look into the underlying matter that's at issue here, I have asked to have referred to the Economic Development Committee, the matter of the possibility of Missoula Youth Homes obtaining some land at Shady Grove. Any other items of new business?
Go on then to items to be referred. Chuck?
There are three items that were too late for the agenda. First one is a request by Chuck Sterns regarding agreements with Extended Family Services in Missoula County for Watson's receiving home loan to Economic Development. Request by Mayor Chemis regarding postponement of zoning hearing from Missoula Youth Homes to plat annexation and zoning. Request by Mayor Chemis regarding possibility of Missoula Youth Homes using a portion of Shady Grove site to Economic Development. Then the regular agenda, request by Jim Van Fossen regarding recreation fee schedule to conservation. Request by Chuck Sterns regarding claims to finance and license, regarding journal vouchers to finance and license, regarding resolution calling for the public sale of SID four-ninety-six bond, which is Tulip Lane, to finance and license, and regarding final resolution on transfer of traffic counters to Mineral County to finance and license. And there are five, five requests dealing with bids that were open today. Request by Chuck Sterns regarding bids for project number ninety-one oh-three-five, one-hundred-and-ninety tons of emulsified asphalt to Public Works, regarding bids for project number ninety-one oh-three-five, twenty-one thousand gallons of asphalt rejuvenating agent to Public Works, regarding eight thousand tons of hot mix asphalt to Public Works, regarding bids for two-thousand-two-hundred, two-thousand-two-hundred tons of Seal Code aggregate to Public Works, regarding bids for four-thousand tons sand surfacing to Public Works. Request by Joe Aldeary regarding changes to interlocal agreement with Missoula County with respect to collection and distribution of connection fees to Rattlesnake Interceptor Sewer to Public Works, and request by Kathy Olson regarding authorization to publish city logo in a publication called City Symbols: A Reference Guide to Noteworthy Municipal Logos and Related Designs to Rules Committee.
Okay. Any other items to be referred? Joe?
One correction, a request for a referral on the council local here to run some way of, not hold.
Okay.
What?
Put Joe's request regarding changes to interlocal agreement with Missoula County with regard to collection and distribution of connection fees to Rattlesnake Interceptor Sewer to Sunlight Land Subcommittee.
Joe, what happened to all Pete Meehan's referrals? He has about eight uniform code adoptions that he told us last week, and we mentioned to Karen that he had those coming. Did he decide to delay those for some reason? The ordinances are already drafted.
I thought they were.
I don't see them on the list. Did you want them referred? Is he under a deadline?
Should be referred. Without objection, we will consider them referred to PAZ. All right. We'll see to it that that gets on the PAZ agenda.
It's the new additions of all your uniform codes except the fire code. These are the building codes.
Any other?
Okay. That is what now again?
It's a, I think it's a series of referrals, actually, referring to...
The nineteen-eighty-eight edition of the uniform codes.
Okay, so ordinances to, to implement nineteen-eighty-eight uniform building codes?
Mechanical, electrical, energy.
If there are no further referral items, then we'll go on to announcements of committee meetings.
Do you want, okay. I wasn't sure, do you want the building codes to go to Public Works or PA, plat annexation and zoning? Well, Joe always says he'd rather have them go to Public Works, but...
I know. They're all about PAZ.
Finance and license?
Uh, three Thursdays, Chuck.
Thursday at three?
Yeah. I don't know. Can we have it on? Well...
Item number two was discharged at tonight's meeting.
Are we still working on the seller price of Mount Shadows?
Waiting for information from Jim Van Fossen and Joe Aldeary.
We have journal vouchers, Tulip Lane, why you have a hard time?
Well, there's a bunch of other things that have to go on on Thursday, that's one.
Well, one reason for also holding finance on Thursday was you have the claim for the four-hundred-thousand-dollar payment to Sunlight, which was sort of to be done in conjunction with the Sunlight Land Subcommittee issue.
Yeah, I understand that. Okay, so, well...
I can have it at three-thirty if you need the time.
Yeah, okay, then let's do the three, Tuesday again. I'm trying to figure out how to go in the right order. Uh, three-thirty.
Judicial Review.
No meeting.
Plat annexation and zoning.
Four-fifteen Tuesday. Three-thirty.
Public Safety.
No meeting.
Public Works.
Tuesday at, at, uh, three.
Rules Committee.
Tuesday at four.
Budget Committee.
No.
Cable TV Committee.
Uh, we'll meet next Wednesday, so nobody will know.
No meeting this week?
Correct.
Conservation.
Uh, Thursday at four.
Economic Development.
Thursday at four.
Sign Ordinance Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Sunlight Land Subcommittee.
Thursday at two forty-five, is that going to be that time? About a minute.
I thought that Elaine had asked that it be Thursday at two? Is that...
Well, yeah, I'm trying to remember what she said, but getting closer to the other meeting. About two thirty. About hour and a half.
What other, there are later meetings?
Yeah, there are meetings starting at, at, uh, three...
Three-thirty.
Three-thirty.
Well, I think we probably need to give a little time for Sunlight Lands.
Well, that's an hour and a half, that's sometimes.
Oh.
An hour at, or an hour and a half?
Well, if you do it at two-thirty, that is an hour. If you do it at two, it's an hour and a half. Do we need an hour and a half? We'll take an hour and a half, yeah.
Well, two-thirty is probably all right then, as long as somebody needs to be sure Elaine knows. Bob?
I can't believe this meeting's almost over and nobody's said anything to Jack, uh, Jack Reedy and Larry McLaughlin. And I can't believe that you haven't, you know, noticed the fact that no one has commented about St. Patrick's Day.
We did that last week.
We did it last week. Two stuff recorded, we just sailed.
We did that last week. We did that Saturday and Sunday.
Okay. Now, nobody still believes me that I'm part Irish, is that right?
Mac Lucino?
I'm, I'm gonna have to bring my mother back again.
Chuck?
Sounds like an Irish song.
Okay. Meetings, finance and license, Thursday at three-thirty. Judicial Review, no meeting. Plat annexation and zoning, Tuesday at four-fifteen. No Public Safety Committee. Public Works, Tuesday at three. Rules Committee, Tuesday at four. No Budget Committee, no Cable TV Committee. Conservation, Thursday at four. Economic Development, Thursday at four-thirty. No Sign Ordinance Subcommittee, and Sunlight Lands, Thursday at two-thirty.
We'll have a brief Legislative Caucus in about two minutes. If there's nothing further, we're adjourned.